Oh, it's definitely the mics on.
Okay. It works and we're recording.
Okay. All right. Thanks, everybody. We'll call the meeting to order at, ooh, yeah, seven forty. Uh, thank you everyone for your patience that we um started to have this reception, right? Before our board meeting and let them have us start a little bit late, but I think it went very well. So thank you, Kim, for doing all the organization of that and getting that whole thing.
Done.
Coordinated. Really, really nice to see, nice to see the cooperation that came out in this day where it didn't for a while.
Mm hmm. Yeah, that's its home now.
I think we should talk about the, the wall behind it on the shelf.
I so. Yes, yeah, no, I, I, we need something definite, different, yes. Now, if, if anyone wants to help like coordinate that with me, that would be great. No, I was thinking the same, okay?
Good.
Anything, yeah.
Anything, yeah, better than, I was happy that it covered. There's a, there's like a, a black mark on one of the walls. It's one of the, it sounds just like, well, this.
Position.
So.
He's gonna make small.
Oh. I, I, I don't generally have small pieces of marble hanging.
It's not that big.
We're gonna pick these, so you can cut it.
That would be.
If, if. We get two by two tile.
Oh, yeah.
Fit.
Something.
Just.
We're gonna have that marble contact paper.
Something else. I'm asking you that.
That's my budget.
All right. So we just need to go ahead and adopt the agenda. Someone can make.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Okay, in a second. Thanks, Kim. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And let's do that with the minutes for August. Motion to accept minutes.
All right.
Can we do it? Kim, all right. And any discussion, comment, questions, corrections? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving right along, planning calendar. A couple of updates on that, uh, that came in afterwards, that sent out. So um, the, and I'm sorry, we don't have everything, I don't, it's not everything, just. Um, even environmental concerns. Um. So, uh, the U H L S core trustee training, uh, has been, I think it was moved. We had it before for the thirteenth, but it's now on the twenty seventh of September. So if anybody's still looking to do one of those, that's on the twenty seventh. And the next, um, Upper Hudson. Uh. Session on the, uh, intellectual freedom policies. It's a Q and A session. It's virtual, so you don't have to travel there. That's on the twenty sixth. And what might be of interest, although maybe our business will be done on this tonight, but it looks like it includes things like policies like collection development, um, meeting room use, uh, programming, the requests for review. So if we end up with any questions on these policies tonight, um, that would be a good one for some or several of us to attend virtually. Um, uh, otherwise, just, I want to make sure we all have in mind that we have, um, we're coming into the busy season of, we're going to be looking at the strategic plan, looking at the budget planning process, trying to get ahead of all of that, so that we're having our discussions and meetings before we have to finalize things. Um, and everything that feeds into that as well. Um, so in October, we need to start the budget planning sessions. I assume that's going to be me, Kim, Richard, and then are there others that are interested? I, I, I'm not sure what is, how much the strategic plan will feed into that this year. Um, so I just want to throw that out there and see if maybe if we just get something on the calendar before we let it, while we're all here and before we forget.
Thank you. I'm out of, out of town until November, at the end of October.
Oh. Okay, so you're out.
I'm out of town. I'm available the first week in October. From November on, I'm available.
Okay.
But.
So no available.
Last two weeks in October, I'm in Minneapolis. I know, I know you're jealous.
Are you available earlier in October?
Yes, and it's a little swamp, but you know, just tell me a day and I can hopefully make it work.
Okay. Kim, do you want to, want to try for just an initial meeting early, or do you want to have you and I meet and then meet with Richard when he's?
I mean, if, if, you know, it'd be any Thursday, any Thursday or Friday before the, October the twentieth, I should be more or less available.
Okay.
But that's.
Let's.
Monday, Wednesday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday are not good.
Any interest in bringing? So far, if anybody else is welcome.
You think I should be there? I can't be there?
I.
I'm not sure how much that is going to play in this year. I mean, that was always the discussion of, how much should we have that?
Yeah.
Factor in, but I know we're kind, well, let's. We talked about strategic plans today and later, let's think about that. Uh, let's just throw out, how's Thursday the twelfth?
We have a program here at five o'clock, but other than that, I'm free.
Okay. I'm, I'm free that day. Richard, does that sound good for you?
Yeah, and the.
Could you before Mahjong?
No, there's a twelve thirty debt appointment. I have to go get my shot.
As long as you get.
For the dogs.
I'm just.
There's special ones new to.
Yeah.
Very special, yeah. They have, they're lactose intolerant, so you have to kind of, you know. No, I can, I can be here at four, no problem.
Four.
Four would be fine.
All right.
You're okay to miss Mahjong?
Uh, hey, I, I just show up and they need cookies. That's the only reason I got.
Okay, good, good, that's.
Yeah, four o'clock on the twelfth, that would work.
Um, and then do we have a date yet on the Veterans Day meeting? Is it, no, it's, it's not on Veterans Day itself, right?
No.
That. Different day.
Yeah, they usually do that a different day. I don't have a date.
Okay.
I'll email.
Tell them and find out. Um, and then in November, we will have the, um, holiday market that's set for twenty fourth. Uh, we'll talk about that later. Um, the twenty fifth is the parade of tree lighting. I think Vicki's very interested again in trying to do a float, um, and has some ideas. So if there's anybody on the board who wants to be part of that to coordinate with Vicki too, I'm sure she would welcome. That's, that's a float for the parade, the light.
The light parade.
So we've gotten a little better.
Olds instead of house.
Yeah.
Olds.
So on the lucky clock. Got lots of lights.
So just to make sure we're all thinking about this, so November, uh, is when we actually review the budget proposal. So we have to have that in hand, so that in December, we can approve it. So occasionally, we've gotten a little bit behind our, our, our planning. So, uh, and November's also when we do our annual review for Kim. Yes, we have a lot to be worried about.
I'm sorry.
And, uh, all right, so anything else that, that, uh, talk about there? If not, I can move right along to the director's report.
So it's been really slow around here. I only. Yeah, right. Um, so. Obviously, it's been very busy. Um, August is usually in September, usually those times when I back off a little bit on programming, but for some reason, I decided not to do that this year, and we have, uh, kept it busy. So it's been good, but our story time numbers are super high right now. It's fantastic. Um, I can't say how happy I am that we had, I think, twelve kids here on Friday or last, yesterday, I don't know what day it is anymore. Um, they're bringing a school bus here next week, so they can go and, they're not going to take a ride on the school bus, because, but they can get on it and they can sit and they can meet the bus driver. It's going to be great. They're going to just absolutely love it, so.
Get on the bus and get the wheel.
Oh, probably. Yeah, we have to.
Yeah.
Um, so those programs have been going good.
Um, has it been working out well to have Rebecca and Cheryl working together?
It has. Uh, we don't have as many preschoolers coming. It's primarily toddlers. Um, but when they do have at least two or three top preschoolers, Cheryl can take them. Sometimes she sits on the front porch with them and reads them a book together, you know, and they always have a project that they can do that's age appropriate. So it works out and it's been going well and Rebecca's really enjoying doing it again. So, um, we are also starting, um, I have, well, I haven't, it's not live yet, but I'm starting to make, we're going to have a new, uh, webpage or page on the website for Storytime or calling it Storytime Corner. And we're gonna do, like, they'll have, Rebecca's going to tell us all, Rebecca and Cheryl will tell me all the different themes that are going to happen for the month, and then any songs that they sing. I'll put also on the website, so parents can go back and grab it if they want to. Um, so we'll have, that's a long story, a Storytime Corner. I just have to, I'm working on it. Um, so that was really, that, that's kind of fun. Um, coming up, let's say, may last, so we do have, I'm almost full for Mondala Painting, so if anyone wants to come to Mondala Painting, you're welcome to, but get your, uh, registration in quick. We are doing knit and crochet, Jody, and, um, has been helping out to do that as well, when I can't be here, because for whatever reason, it seems like I can't. Um, we're doing Wildlife Tales, which is a really cool program, I hope. Um, we have live animal, goes along with folklore stories. So they're going to tell the folklore, they're going to talk about it, and then they'll show the live animals, so. Hopefully should be good. And then we have the Steven Town Clean Energy Community Program is going to be here on that Saturday coming up. I will not be able to be here for that, so, um, I'm gonna just let the staff know whoever's working and then they can help out with at least setting up and stuff. Um, I will be in the Adirondack Saturday. You know what the date is?
December thirty.
The thirty eighth. Um, and then the next week on the seventh, Birds of Prey is coming back. So we'll have Birds of Prey here. I don't know that we'll be outside under the tent, because it's still in the mess. Um, maybe we'll be on the deck, or maybe we'll just be here, but we can do that too, so. Um, and then the other thing that I have coming up, um, is the, that's, that's an herb program. It, um, she's going to talk about common household herbs that you have and how they can be used medicinally. Um, or what you can do with them around, you know. Uh, and then the other thing that I have been excited to start off is we're doing a, uh, it's called Baby Cafe. It's a support group for nursing moms. And it's, we had two people come this time. Hopefully we'll have more next time, but it's a great support group and it's being held with lactation consultants from St. Peters, so they're professionals. Um, it's not just, you know, a pure, a pure thing. This is like, you know, oh, if you want to weigh your baby and see how much they weigh, they bring a scale.
Nice.
Um, so it's, it should be good. And it's a part of a grant, so hopefully we'll be having it for a while. And if we do get a good setup coming, they said they would be happy to buy, um, a rocking chair or two that we can put in here for moms to use.
Cool.
And we would just keep it. So hopefully, we're going to keep drumming up some business. So if anyone knows.
There's a lot of, a lot of interest on Facebook that posts that I saw.
There was, I was kind of bummed to see there were only two people, but maybe it just is the time of day, who knows? So, but yeah, if anyone knows anybody who, you know, about to have a baby or has a baby or, you know, wants to learn about it, it's totally, it should, it's, it's very nice. And the people who are running it are wonderful, so they're really good, good folks. Um, okay, so, uh, community rooms, room use, so the library's still being used for yoga with John Wall, and then Indivisible did their Steven Town, their, um, ice cream social, but they didn't really use the building. They just used the side.
Yeah, they didn't use the tent either.
Yeah, because it was funny. It was kind of not so, not great. Um, and let's see, so we, I, you got my, so all of our statistics, um, circuit, our visits are down this month, but that's to be expected because of the, the expedition finally ended, but we did have over a thousand people come here who were not normal patrons of the last Steven Town library. So that was huge and it was great. Um, I did attend their, um, their party, the expedition party, and of the thing that most of the people remember the most about our library is the typewriter. Everyone loves the typewriter. Oh, you're the library with the typewriter. Yes. Um, I had a couple of kids talk about how much they loved writing on the typewriter. So it was.
Yeah, that was very related.
It's cool. It, yeah, it was, it's very cool. So Scott Connors, thank you so, so much again and again. Um, but yeah, that was fun. Uh, and let's see, our active patrons, we did have some new patrons, um, register with us over in, from in August. So I think that had to do with the new patron.
Right.
Um, program. I think we had like six new people, which is great for us in one month. Um, so that was pretty good. Uh, you can see in my collection development stuff. Um, so everything for summer camp and summer food, all the paperwork is done. So, and they just got their check. Uh, the town just got their check for twenty nine hundred bucks. So that has all been taken care of. I don't want to deal with that until January, I think. Um, the construction grant has been submitted. Um, so that has, I have one other thing that I have to try and figure out. It's another thing with, um, the, the government and being a part of, uh, this, the, a website that you have to have for the federal government. You have to have an account. Our account is inactive. Superset is, used to be the person who was in charge of it, so I have to see if I can work with her, but we don't need to have that write in immediately. That's when they're ready to give funds out, so.
But we did more than.
You can't get her old.
But she, I already emailed her, so she, um, said she just did it for another company that she's working for, so she's like, we can make this work, so we should be able to get it.
And we did more than, we did more than submit it, right? Or do you want to?
What did I do?
I mean, we got word, right?
Oh, yes. Sorry. So we have, uh, I got a preliminary, um, letter from Upper Hudson, and we are going to be, the preliminary, what the recommendation is, is to give out, uh, seventy point eight three percent of what our seventy five hundred percent maxes, so.
Basically, there's a possible five percent reduction for everyone's requests.
Yeah, so. And if anyone else backs out, then that'll still mean more money for us, that we could potentially have the old seventy five percent, which is probably more than what we're going to need, because we did estimate a lot of stuff very high. So hopefully, we won't have to use, uh, we won't, we won't actually need that. But, yeah, so.
Well, so, uh, expansion of our.
Yeah, and doing, um, energy efficiency. So doing a heat pump instead of the oil furnace, at least for that section. We have two furnaces. We have one here and then one in this building. Um, so get rid of that one. Make it open up. It'll be, it's nice. It's been something we've been wanting to do for, well, since I started here. Just get rid of all that in there, but, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, well, that's the plan, so hopefully it'll, it'll go well. So, yeah, so that's all set. And in the middle of doing all of the, um, applications, I found out that our furnace was actually leaking water. Um, so we had to call John, report it in, and he had fixed it, but there was a, I don't remember, I, I do not remember the name of the terms, but something, the intake thing was leaking water, and it had been leaking for a long time, so I don't know how the floorboards condition, the conditions, because it's been, it was soaked when I went back there. Um, so hopefully it's dried out by now. It's been about a month. So that's, that was, uh, another part of things that happened. But luckily, I had to go in there to check all that stuff, to, to take pictures, so I'm glad that I found it. Otherwise, it would have been an error for a long time. Um, the L D grand, so. The St. Peter's thing I already talked about. Uh, we did meet with the town council with Jen Ari to discuss where camp, but we'll talk about that at the other thing. Uh, we have our budget set for the commu- youth committee. I don't know whether or not that's going to go through. We had a branded marketing committee meeting. Uh, a staff meeting on September eleventh. Just so everybody's aware, Jody's going to be out for medical reasons from starting September twenty eighth, and she's hoping to come back on the twenty fifth of October. Um, so. I think we have every, all of our ships are covered. I think everyone was good to step up and, and do what needed to be done. So we should be, we should be okay for that, so. Um, but I'll let you know if anything else happens. Um, we attended a D A meeting, strategic planning meeting. Um, I did ask Kirk Mitchell to come and take a look at the stairs and the railing of the main entrance, which are rotting. Um, it turns out now that Kirk wasn't sure whether or not we needed a building permit to redo the whole thing, um, because they are pretty rotted, but he was, it's kind of like in between needing to just do a full redo and.
Yeah, what he said when I happened upon him and he just broke in. Said that the, um, stairs are all rotted, that, that the, the deck part seems to be okay, so.
So it's just the stairs.
The stairs and.
And the rails.
Two seven. Well, no, um, Mike wonderfully briefed the rails for us, so the railing.
Need to boat the right end a little.
No, we just did the one, because the one, the one on the right is still okay for now, so we figured.
But it doesn't need to be, because people were complaining that they want their people along being.
Oh, being wobbly? Oh, I'm not sure. He might have tightened it up already, because he was doing stuff.
He'll pay it, but it's, so.
Go lively, yeah. Mike's been going. Yes, and I think actually on Monday, my husband and the boys are going to come and help him move the little library onto its.
You can't fix the door until that happens, because they're laying on.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. But he's doing a great job. Wait, so our little library fell over. It lasted over the winter, and, um, Kim's husband Mike has been volunteering his time to read, to put it back up.
Yeah, I saw that. It's all the pieces and plants now. It's really good. It was a Girl Scout project originally, and then, and it hasn't, you know, the Girl Scouts moved on and all of that. He's trying to figure out a way to get this done, and then, and it's kind of a big project, so I really appreciate Mike stepping up to do.
Yeah, it's been great. Um, so I did speak to, um, Owen Casaba, who is the town, um, it's code inspector, and he said that we needed to have a permit if he's going to do the entire thing, but if he's just replacing a few boards, then we don't. So I'm going to try and coordinate between the two of them, and then hopefully to figure that, that part out. Um, so hopefully that will happen soon. If it doesn't happen relatively soon, I'm almost at the point where we might have to block those, have people start using the other entrance, because they are pretty wobbly and, and last thing we want is a fall. Right, so. Um, let's see. The other big thing too is that our solar panels are not working right now. Um, they haven't been taking in energy for the past two months. Uh, I didn't catch it on the first, on the July, um, bill for NICE egg, but I caught it on the second one, August. Uh, there is a, um, it's a, there's a couple of, there's an arc, it said an arc was detected and we need to have the, so I contacted my colleague, he then told me to, can, get in touch with Kevin Bailey. He's with High Peak Solar. Um, I spoke to Kevin and, um, it's going to be extremely expensive to have him come and check. Um, he said he would need two guys, because the solar panels are on the roof, and he would need four to five hours at a hundred dollars an hour per person. So we're looking at a thousand dollars just to find out why they're not working anymore. Um, I haven't said yes to him yet, because I said, I need to go to the board. I can't do that one on my own.
How much did they save us during the year?
Um, I'd have to look at that. I haven't figured that out yet, so.
You have, you got three out there?
Oh, I don't think more than, there's already, there's a lot. Um, yeah, I don't know how many, but there's a lot. Are you? Was that? Yeah. Not that old, not that old. I think we got them in, in sixteen.
I can only imagine a bit since sixteen.
So.
Then the newer, the newer panels are much more efficient and much lighter. And while we're having the roof fixed, maybe we should look at that, replacing those.
Well, the roof, that, that part of the roof doesn't need to be fixed.
Understand, but while we're at it.
It's possible. I don't, we got the, those solar panels were part of a grant, so I, we would have to figure out where money would come for new panels. The, I am kind of, I did put a call into, to one other company, and I was going to call another company and see how much they would charge us to come out and triple up.
Well, you do have, you do have money in your repair budget to have them come out.
What about, you were saying there might be, um, extra funds for the, the construction grant? Could we tie the energy efficiency of solar panels in?
I would have to, I think we'd have to reapply and, and we changed the entire thing.
You know, the efficiency.
I, I, I think, yeah, I think right now the concern is, I mean, it's one thing, we have a thousand dollars to fix it if need be in the budget, but do we have a thousand dollars to just find out what's wrong with it? And that's, that's really steep for a valuation.
Sure is. Well, hopefully this second record place that need contacted will come in on a day much deeper.
Uh, yeah, that's what I'm hoping for. So I, I will, I have two other places. I'll find out what they will charge to have, to come up. Um, I don't know if there's a certain amount that we, you know, do we want to do that, like, if, if they come in at five hundred bucks to go and check it, uh, is it okay to do that? Or do we want to wait and, you know, talk about it at the next minute?
But is key. How much do we save? You know, how much?
I mean, if, if it's possible to be able to tell.
We, I think we can.
Usually you can tell how much is back going back.
Let me see if I can pull it up and I'll let you know.
Like, uh, which, well, looking like the last July or August statement, probably go back a year.
I was thinking it was changing, but summer months, but actually we rained so much.
Yeah, that's, I'm thinking, you know, maybe.
Yeah.
Maybe that's why they're not working.
I forgot what it is.
Calling with solar panels, it's solar.
Uh, NICE egg's website is going to take a little bit, so I'll, I'll pull that up, and I'll go to other things. Um, reading adult fiction is happening. Um, I met with two people named Sarah and Jen. Obviously, not you guys. Um, they are homeschooling moms. They just moved to the area and live, or one of them lives over by Emerald Glen and is trying to start up a homeschooling program there. Um, she's offering different classes, but they wanted to find out how they could work with the library to do, offer different programs, whether it be, let's learn how to make a bench, and we will make a memorial bench that can stay at the library, or, you know, those kinds of projects that, uh, so we're brainstorming. One of the women is a teacher, a music teacher, so she definitely is going to want to do some music classes, so we'll do music classes here, which will be great.
That's really cool.
And she said she can teach anyone from kids to adults, so we might be able to, to work some non-stop out with her. So that's another. So we're looking for another, um, path we're taking with the community.
There seems to be a lot of homeschooling interest, so that's a good way to.
There is. homeschooling is definitely still, it's not as big, I don't think, as it was during the pandemic, but it's definitely still up there, so. Um. The other thing you'll see on the report during the pandemic, I don't know if everyone remembers, but we did a yarn bombing thing where everyone did some knitting, and then we put them wrapped, everything around the columns. Um, Jody has been working over the past year, few years to put all those pieces together to make a quilt, and so she's, it's a quilt that's big enough to use for story time, so we're going to use. So once it's finished, we'll have a new story time quilt, which is going to be great, because there's so many wonderful textures in it. So the little guys are just going to be like, I, I can see it being a great thing, so. Very, very pleased that Jody was willing to do that. Um, so. I'll let everybody know when it was done. And summer reading finished, and we had some pretty decent statistics, about the same as what we normally do, but, um, you can see our, we had sixty registrations, and we had thirty five kids actually complete, so more than half, which is
normal.
Normal. Um, and then the amount of hours that the kids read and the books that they read, so they read six hundred and ninety two hours, and they read a thousand, one thousand twenty six books between all of them. Um, and we were able to give every child a present or a, a, a prize. So I think there was only one or two that I, I gave a prize to that they didn't ask for that prize, but that was because they didn't win anything at all, and they didn't want to go. So, um, so story time, or the summer reading one, I think it went well. Um, it seemed like everybody enjoyed it this time this year. Uh, until I get the NICE egg stuff pulled up, I think that's about it.
Taking it off a long time, though.
Yeah, it is.
Kim, I just want to say, you've been doing a phenomenal job, and every time I follow up with you on something, and I'm, I'm, no, I'm not shocked, because I, because I don't think you're doing, doing a good, going to do a good job. I'm shocked, because there's so much going on. And I think, okay, I'm sure she doesn't have an update on that yet. And you're like, oh, no, I called this one guy. And I'm just amazed. It makes me feel bad about, about what I'm accomplishing, because like, how's she getting all that done? But, and it's, it runs again, and it's on having focus. And going to do.
And going to. Uh, it, it, this is like my end of the summer, like, you know, run, so when November shows up and I'm like, you know, meeting, going down in the dumps because of the.
We'll send it back. But really, it's.
Okay, but, but we're, we're sure it's yours. It'll be nice.
Sounds great. What's that? Oh, I would go to Sis. I don't care where it is. I don't care if it's hot either. Anywhere.
But really, great job. And even today, you were, you were, you were abiding to, uh, that's, whatever, to get to talk to Jake Ashby's office about potential for the, for, for help with, you know, children's, I mean, you're just really doing it all. We just, I just wanted to say how much I appreciate it.
Oh, thanks.
That is noticed.
Thank you. I appreciate that, because, yeah, there's days when it's like, oh my gosh, this is a lot. But the, to update everybody on Jake Ashby's office, they, we started talking to his aides, and they said, oh, well, do you want us to write a letter of recommendation for you? Is it sure? I guess can't hurt, hurt. So my hope is that if we need extra funds, maybe I can choose. So we're making at least contact with different legislators to keep, keep ourselves out there, so. So, yeah, so that's about it for me. Thank you.
And if you have a chance, do we have a documentation on the warranty from Penns? I think, right. Only useful life, it just seems about twenty years. Are there maybe parts that'll?
The business, the company that we bought from, from is out of business.
But who, who's the manufacturer?
That I do not know. That I do not know. I'll find, I'll see if I can find something on it, um, so. Uh, yeah, I think so. Oh, okay, let me, I'll um see what I can find. Tom might remember too. Solar. Please try again later.
Yeah, I didn't worry about it, and I think we can, I mean, yeah.
I, I can go back through the paper records and look, so.
Yeah, I mean, that may be a better way of doing it, because if, if you're not having access to it, it's just gonna sit there and. Buffer, buffer until it.
I don't, I don't think we, it's, it's a urgent matter, I mean, it's a, so if we need to regroup next month because the estimates are coming in our high. We need to figure it out, you know, and I think we can.
Then I doubt, I doubt we get much solar panel savings over the next few months.
Right, right, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'll find warranty and let's say.
All right, Richard, you're up, treasure.
Uh, okay, as you can see, we're still, uh, we're doing pretty well on income, uh, considering that we've only. Annual appeal that has only got fifty-one hundred dollars, um, the sixty-nine ninety-six, not SML funds, what is that?
That is the money we've been reimbursed from the town for summer camp.
Okay.
So those, those funds.
That was, that, that was a surprise since we didn't have any record of that? In the budget?
Uh, we don't put it in our budget, um, because it's the town's budget. So if you look on. Fifty-four fifty, non-SML expenses. That is the town youth commission, so that has everything from summer camp to Easter to Halloween party and then team nights.
Alright, so that's a wash is what you're telling me, okay. Cause I mean, I didn't see anything.
Yeah, okay, um.
Alright, uh, other than that, uh, our interest is about twelve hundred ahead.
Yeah, that was surprising.
Good year, yeah, uh, library operations two fifty ahead, uh, contributions was um, uh, nine hundred dollars more than we thought it would be. And then, um, so hanging in there pretty good, uh, expenses are still, uh. About what, forty thousand short of what we had budgeted, so I don't know what's on the horizon. Payroll, of course.
Payroll, insurance payments will happen. Uh, programming.
See, insurance.
Yeah, you see, that's still.
Yeah, we usually pay our.
Yeah, that's about, that's about three thousand dollars, about thirty-five hundred.
Yeah, that's usually done in, in December.
Yeah, yeah, you've got insurance at like four thousand dollars, just, I mean, still, still. Still trying to figure out how we're gonna get there, that's okay. Um, the, the, the grant money that goes towards the building, that's gonna be handled separately, I'm guessing? There'll be a separate account for the building fund, okay? So do we then schlep money from our special projects into that?
That I'm gonna find out, I don't know how it all works, but I know that um when you, it would be considered a capital fund.
Yes.
When reporting it all, so I think it'll have to stay in that capital fund section of our.
Specifically for that.
Right, yeah, and we would keep all that separate.
My kind of figure, you, you, they, they watch it pretty carefully, so. And we would take the, but we would take the, but we take the twenty thousand gift and add it to that.
I'm pretty sure that that's what we would do, but uh, this is my first time, so.
I'd love to play with that much money. Um, other than that, uh, we're hanging in there very well. Uh, we do have money to look at the solar panels to determine what the problem is. And it would be worth, it would be, it would definitely be worth it even if it's a thousand, look at it.
I'll see if I can find cheaper.
Under, understated, please, and, and maybe you could also call the manufacturer once you find that out and see who is one of their reps in this area. Because that is more than likely, they would have somebody if they're, if they have. Some sort of warranty, then they would come out and look at it at their expense. Yeah, that's what normally happens in these cases.
John being a good contact. John, who is just here.
Oh, yeah.
And so works in the solar energy industry. So he may be a very good resource.
John de Vries?
Maybe you go, you know, go up there just to check, see who made it. Eight-year-old records are kinda like traction. If you have in the.
Um, they're. I'll be able, if I, they're either in the cabinets or upstairs, there's only two places where they could be.
Okay.
Said famous last words, um, okay, I'll, yeah, I didn't know.
He has strong opinions about everything, he might go on.
Who knows if it's just something that like.
We need an expert, you know, that's what we need. Okay, any questions on the finances at all?
Nope, but now we're, as, as we're going backwards in time, I'm sorry, we're very bad at finance today. It prompted me because you were talking about money that we have in the budget, but we do have to figure out the money for the um repairs here. And also is Kirk doing the door?
Uh, we're not that far yet, yeah, we still.
So that, that would be, that, you know, as I said, we do have some in there.
Yeah, we'll just have to kind of look at the, look at that.
Yeah, oh, oh, no, I, I totally get it, I figured, I figured that he was, hadn't turned the building. And the good news is heating oil is cheaper than what we like.
That is good, yeah. Alright, so we're gonna move on to old business, which last time we talked about by law changes and we're, they're just a brief update to say that.
We did need, we, we basically agreed with all of the recommendations, but there were two. That we wanted to change the wording on and we're waiting for some answers from legal. Uh, to see if we can, in the one case, so the one that we definitely wanna go ahead and. Changes, they have um in that article for trustees section, um, they have us, it's having a nine-member board of trustees. And we want it to follow what the charter says, which is um trustees at least five. And it's up to twenty-five percent of the same thing, but um. But we, we, we didn't wanna say we have nine, or we rarely have nine, um, so that we would be in careers, basically wouldn't be correct. And we wanted to stick with the term, but the other one has to do with um all members of the board having to reside in Stevens Town. And we think we may be able to um get around that, but we're waiting to find out if that's possible.
Right, that, that's what Tim and, but we're starting for the final.
Yeah, we're not a public library, maybe, and we are not public offices. And that was from the public officers law, so unless there's some other statutory requirement, like foil. We said with legislation libraries, apply the foil. That provision does.
The, uh, do we, so, but we still are under with meeting law or open meetings law, is, is that?
That's, that's also, well, public meetings law is provided for in the educational.
Okay.
It doesn't, does, just. We're not, we're a private organization.
Okay.
Public officers are members of, for example, uh, school board districts.
Right.
Public libraries. We're not that.
Okay.
We're not considered a public library, we're not.
There are lots of different kinds.
So it sounds like we won't have the problem, but, but we do need to get language to replace the language that they have that does reference. Us, yeah, so that.
Well, we just take up the chances and have the resident service.
Just, but we didn't, don't add anything else, no other wording, okay, that's easy.
Charter and service area, I would count New Levin as a charter and service.
Well, that's what we were thinking too.
Well, did, with charter.
Right, charter.
It says specifically.
I think you looked, I mean, you looked through the public officer's law. Section three, which Tim thought probably would vitify. Which I don't think does, has about sixty-five different sections. And some of them are for local events. Generally, you can serve as a public officer in the local government if you live in the jurisdiction that's adjacent.
Oh.
And in fact, public village libraries have that same. So even if the public officer applied, which I don't think so, there may be some.
Okay, so we'll just make the changes to the wording. We will make sure everybody has a chance to look at it and we'll vote on it, do you, do you wanna, can we wait until the next meeting or do you wanna do something?
I think we should just wait until we find the language, yeah. Thank you guys for working on that.
Conveniently, I will not be here the next week.
Oh, so. Okay, so the next thing in old business was the collection development policy stuff that we talked, we were sort of hearing it last time. So it's the um collection development material, reconsideration policy. And I think there's categories there, um. So, did anybody have any questions, comments, suggestions?
The. Materials for consideration form is on the website, but I couldn't find.
It's, it wasn't. It's not on the website. Oh, it will be on the website once it's approved.
And what's in the request form?
This is pretty much word for word from upper Hudson.
Yeah, that's what we, when we went to the meeting, they were very adamant that we had to have that and add it to the file page in person.
The only thing that I noticed, and I think it is because we're using like word for word, um, is that, that it seemed like there were a couple times where the. Name that's listed in the policy is not quite the name, it's like. Yeah, yeah, or, so like. You know, um, and then it, the one of, there's about. Um, programs and displays, not just materials, but we don't really talk about that, so I, I didn't know if we needed to have a separate.
Separate one.
Um, in the meeting, they were saying it's best to be as all-inclusive as possible, so that you have one document that except, that kind of covers all. Uh. Or possible issue that are, um.
So it's a library materials, resources.
Displays.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So aside from just that cleanup, which we can, I, I think we can agree to. Adopt these with cleaning up the um naming, so that the form reflects what's in the policy and that we add in those. Uh, programs and displays, did anybody have any um questions or concerns of the substance of? Policies?
I assume that we need, the question may be made in person. Because we don't want outside groups who aren't here.
Yeah, don't want anything to be internet-based, because then it could be somebody from Florida sending a complaint about something in our catalog, and that's exactly what it was. It just limits the possibility for muckrakers, basically.
Makes sense. Any other comments, concerns? Do we feel like we can go ahead and make a motion to adopt these policies with. Um, said changes?
Yeah, no, I agree.
Okay.
I mean, it's, look, if we come up with something and you need to change policy, you're gonna get the policy. And the document, which your company said, is really the more important document.
Yeah, that.
Because basically it says. Have you read it? What is your objection?
Right.
And specify, because that gets you to the corner. Yeah, form is, is really useful.
Yeah.
Okay, so can somebody make that motion?
Oh my gosh.
I move that we adopt the policy.
All in favor? Alright, thank you, everybody, we'll go up on the website this week, thank you, Kim. Okay. Okay, and the last, uh, we kind of touched on this um a little bit already, but hold this, Sarah, thank you for sending around notes on the training. That you guys attended for the challenges, was there anything you wanted to mention here or any other next steps besides the policy adoptions?
I don't think so, um, I wanted to actually share something that they shared with us to just give a sense, most of the um. Complaints or challenges are youth book related and having to do with adult um collection. And they're pretty much um either race or um. L G B T Q related content for the most part, so it's sort of political and it's safer. Um, I think the, the only thing is that um. The most important thing they said to handle challenges is to have these policies in place and. And broadly understood and shared by staff and anyone who might interact with somebody who comes in to make a challenge. So that would even be volunteers and people like that, that's probably a unlikely scenario, but they said it's happening, yeah, um.
I'm more of a common, wider of a lot of staff first.
Right, but it, but on the other, there are times when Kim won't be here where somebody might think of challenging, so they, they.
What they said was, uh, if someone happened to be to have that, Kim might not be here, the right response was, we have a policy for that. Here's the form.
Yes.
I mean, and that, that was the end of the conversation. Here's the policy, fill out the form, return it, but it's complete. So you don't get anybody involved until the form is in your hands.
But even that, like having a standard, like response that everybody.
Yeah.
Right, so that, just like you're coming for, you've been heard, you know? But that they all kind of say the same.
They were adding that, that, you know, that we have a policy.
Yeah, and also that, that any challenge, you need to respond in a very neutral sort of way, in a very respectful sort of way, whatever you think of the challenge.
Yeah, just basically been heard.
You have another staff meeting scheduled for.
We have a staff meeting scheduled for the next year. Once a month, everybody's loving it, so once a month on the first Monday of the month, so if anyone has something you want, this might get rolled over again.
The other thing is that um in response to the form. You, there, there needs to be a committee which would be made up of Ken, that cannot have board members on it, has to have staff members. Um, and they will, would be the, um, they don't wanna follow the complaint, the, the challenge.
The challenger.
Um, and come to the conclusion as to how you're gonna handle it and then communicate that and writing, I believe, and then, and then if, if. The challenger is unhappy, they have the right to come to a board meeting to address it, but, but just in a time limited. Like two minutes for their sign, and then we say thank you very much for.
And they can also notify us in writing.
Yes.
And they can do a price and write, yes.
Thank you, sorry, helpful.
It was a good um workshop, like it's, having been to a zillion. I felt like it was, it was useful. They were really solid on what they were talking about, the materials they gave us were really good. And it was also really cool to be there in person, hear like, you'll win in Bethlehem and woes.
Okay, one does have, yeah, let's have drag queens, that, that won't be a problem.
Yeah, the second thing that, that I didn't mention is that. Um, a lot of the orientation around it is that these parents that, that wanna make a challenge. Think it's the library's job to keep their kids from accessing uh, things and it, and, and the policy states that. Um, it is not the library's job, it's the parent's job to make decisions about what they can and cannot read. They have full ability to do that, but it's not our job to.
Right, we talk with our staff about that very, a lot about how, you know, even if we see someone, the child's taking out an R rated movie. It's, that's the parents' job, you know, you can't. We don't have, we're not gonna censor it, we're not, it's up to the parents. They don't want them having it and they see it, they come home, then they'll bring it back, but. Yeah, I mean, it's hard too, because you know, we know a lot of these kids personally, so we might say, go ask your mom if that's okay. But we're not gonna say, no, you can't have it. So. And children under twelve aren't supposed to be here without their parents anyway, so they don't, it, we haven't had a lot of that issue. She didn't want me to check out books to her daughter, like we didn't have happy endings. I think she was like fourteen. She went to the book store, that's a happy life, kind of alive, so I write everything in law. Haven't heard of a book in the library, I don't know how many years. Yeah, I know. But yeah, she would be like, yeah, do you do this more water? Do you know the ending of this work?
Wow. That's bizarre.
Wow, well, I haven't had that happen yet, so. Knock wood wherever it is.
Okay, thanks everybody for that. So moving to committee reports, we've actually covered a little bit, so major projects we've already talked about, the good news there. Um, anything else to add? No. Fundraising, a quick update, um, so a couple of things. So we talked about doing another pop-up merchandise store, um, the holiday market, Sarah's touching that in her other report. We're gonna do that. The annual appeal plan right now, so Deborah, who's not here tonight, um, is planning to write the letter. She's got some thoughts on a different approach for the letter this year. Elaine is gonna work on it, so it's gonna like come like a personal, personalized message. Um, and then, but we're gonna use our existing response envelopes and we'll do it the normal way. Uh, she seemed. So it's very surprised that we just manually print out stuff and do it ourselves, but um.
Welcome is smoking.
Yeah, I think she was, it's like she knows we're small, but then she hears it. Um, so the plan will be to send that in November, and then we're gonna be sending this impact report idea uh, in December, so we need to start planning that and be. Close card, but we do have money set aside in the budget uh, as for a marketing project of the year, so. Um, that's good there. Uh, the really big news is that we, the matching donation challenge, we have made the match. So um, that is excellent, so we'll let the donor know about that and um, so. That was a surprise. Yeah, slow start, so.
Yeah, very slow start.
Um, and I think actually, once the um. Thermometer.
Yeah.
Went on Facebook, all of a sudden we did get, we did get fantastic, so. Um, the uh, holiday market, we started putting solicitations up. Does anybody have any other different ideas of where we can solicit vendors perhaps? Um, some different ones and or maybe slightly more like, you know, like a little bit like ups, not upscale, but you know. Okay, for, for sale? Okay.
Evermark. So, are they one of the, it's a whole part of it's um. What's the Columbia High School, what's the?
East Greenbush.
One of them has frequent like events where they have vendors and stuff. And sometimes I look at them like, wow, this is like so cool, I wish I could go, but I can't, they have a really cool vendor.
I don't think it's April.
Alright, so maybe it's East Greenbush, so. Um, I think it's, it's either where my friend Nancy Peakers or where her kids go. They asked me if I can ask her, but I know, I just, I look at her, think sometimes and just think like, wow, this, he got cool.
But yeah, okay.
And they might not be Steen Town local, but they're like.
San, San Lake has had a part of their neighborhood garage sale. They had a huge field set up on forty-three that had about fifty of those guys. So I don't know, I don't know where they found them, but it was, it was as much a flea market, craft show, as it was a garage sale. And these were a lot of professionals that go around the flea market, et cetera. I don't know, maybe Messiers could help, because they have, they, they have the flea market now for New Lebanon is over by Messiers. Because they're not allowed to use the toilet, the closet.
Oh, right.
Yeah. Yeah, they, they moved off.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, that's just a thought, but I mean, I was surprised because it was that field in front of the. Uh, right across the way, that's just on forty-three.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, Belize.
Pretty good.
Good.
Oh, really? I've never been, but.
What's, what's that?
We got distracted by the opening of Phillies.
Oh, yeah, like it's another, another high class deli sandwich shop.
Their baking pans are really good. I love, yes, yes.
You're, you're well, well supplied, good save.
I mean, it's the same model in each one, I mean, it's crazy. I don't get it.
You need to bring them here, so it's easier to access.
The last thing in fundraising is just that, so I know it's, I, I thought this was gonna be a stronger report at the end. So data cleanup has been completed for the, for the ELO system, hooray. Um, the ma, most of the manual entries are done. That was gonna be, it was gonna be done. It was so close to being done. It's not though. Um, but it's, uh, so I did start to get an idea of the process for mailings. Um, much to my disappointment, I, you still end up having to export to Word, um, to.
Yeah, you're making your template, right?
Yeah, to do the ten, and then.
Yeah, and then you have to export to Word and put it out.
Yeah. It's not export to Word.
I just sent it, it does it automatically, it downloads automatically to Word.
My home computer, I don't have Word.
Then just, just send it to me and I, I bought, I just bought four thousand pieces of print papers, I got plenty of paper. And a brand new cartridge.
Anyway.
I just sent out a hundred and sixty renewals for the Pittsfield Library.
Okay.
So I know exactly how it translates to Word and everything else, so if you want to, you know.
Okay.
Do you have Word on these, on the computer here?
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you have a printer here that works? Get that.
Yes, we just got our old printer back.
Yeah, I saw that.
Google Docs. And it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't work. It doesn't work.
We're having a program on our two.
Okay, how cool.
On Google, Google Drive, how to use it, how to do it.
I can never figure out how to.
I don't, yeah. So come to my program on October twenty-third. Oh, that's right.
Yeah, that's right.
After every, not your shots.
No, I mean, as long as Sarah puts up the thing, I just click on it and give them the Sarah and she loads it. Problem solved.
You don't have your Sarah drive, that's.
Well, I, I mean, when y'all first did Google Drive, I said, what the F is this? Zip files and all this fun stuff. Fortunately, I had a lot of experience with zip files, but it was like, oh, weird. What happened to just? But no, I'm, I'm serious, I mean, I, I mean, literally, if you need help with ELO, just let me know and I'll be more than happy.
I am definitely, I will.
Because you have to create the template and then you load it in. And then it auto, auto feeds and if you have window envelopes, you, it puts it right, the address right where you wanted. It's flawless.
Okay.
I just sent out a hundred and sixty, but we like two hours.
Okay, that's good, yeah, yeah. We'll have a, we'll have a party here.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I mean, the thing is that you get tons of your forever stamps, you know, that's the biggest expense.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you have window envelopes here, I'm assuming?
Yeah, but we don't send the mailing and the window envelopes, we send them in regular envelopes.
So then you would need to print out labels.
Yeah. Melanie just a person again, right?
I don't know who does. I don't know if ELO does that.
Uh, that would think be more tedious for. Doing it in the.
Normally you would, you'd print out the, the sheets of labels, but I'm not sure if ELO do that.
I think so, I, I saw a label thing.
Okay, okay, that would make sense. And you do the thirty year, yeah, not, it's not the eighty.
The what?
We have thirty labels a year.
Oh.
Eighty, eighty labels.
Yeah, yeah. All right, uh, random marketing.
Okay, um, let's see, uh, I'm just gonna do a quick recap on the welcome program. Um, we had fifty attendees. Um, it went really well. We did a quick survey with uh, attendees who left their email addresses, which was twenty-four. And half of those people responded to the online survey, which is, I mean, it's only twelve people on one end, but on the other hand, that's fifty percent of those people who gave us our email addresses, which is pretty great. Now, we're gonna quickly go through the um, highlights of what they had to say. Uh, two in three respondents rated their recent new resident friend highly successful. Attendees noted the warm welcoming atmosphere and indicated that. They had met new neighbors and learned the previously unknown town resources, which were really valuable to them. The event also succeeded in generating new volunteers and income for a number of SMLs control organizations. Um, the primary merits towards for learning about this event is local media, which is what we see in all of our. Surveys, uh, but the mailing to residents um, that, that went into their mailboxes was the second most noted source. And we should probably consider using that in future if it's cost effective, because it seems like it really attracts people, especially people that don't already have a relationship with the, with the library. Um, one of the ideas that bubbled up organically at the brunch was to um, consider having jam sessions here for local musicians, so we asked the question as to whether people were interested in that. Um, one in four survey respondents expressed interest in learning more about the idea, uh, but we only got three email addresses. Uh, so I think what we're gonna do is just go ahead and um, have a kickoff run, which Deborah.
Deborah's doing, yeah.
Is going to, to run uh, and have people kind of brainstorm what they want it to be like. Um, and if they will, you know, what would interest them and will, you know, build it and they will come back. Um, additional feedback is largely congruent with Lori's SML for being so welcoming and reaching out to the new folks in town. Suggestions included making some more formalized introductions of groups and services rather than just leaving it for people to go up to, you know, and asking. Uh, and sharing contact information for follow-ups, which. You know, there's probably two points of view about that, but. It goes up after that. Um, in terms of what needs attention from a brand marketing perspective. Um, I need to create a press release for the veterans statue unveiling, so I need to kind of get my hands on a few things, so I know what I'm talking about. I mean, I was here, but you know, just. Uh, so I'm not ready to do that, this is, I can't, um. I have down here to write a launch survey on, to want, write and launch a survey on community members who work from homes, level of interest in working in the library Monday a week, that Deborah's idea. I wonder if we should just do sort of what we're doing with the jam session. I mean, there, there's a couple of things we could do, but I think too many surveys about very specific things and people are gonna get turned off. Um, so I think maybe we should just do a build it and they will come and like say, we're gonna do that. What, was her idea to have people come whenever they wanted, or would it be one day?
Could you, could you put a, could you put a sign up out here saying, are you interested in working, you know, from home here type thing and check with the, check with the, the people? I don't know.
What'd you say, work from?
Work from, work from, work from the library.
Yeah, it's, what's, what's the harm? Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
The risk, yeah, we just need to have the thought and then if people say, oh, I would love to do this, but I can't come on Wednesdays, well, they won't make note of that.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think that's fair, I don't want, I don't really wanna do a survey.
No, I don't think it's.
Uh, so work from home at SML, we can just pick a date?
Not Thursday.
I just have, when, when the uh, community room would be.
Available.
Available.
It's not be all day either.
Right, just certain hours.
Fear from ten to three on Wednesday.
Right.
Then we need to do some marketing around, like, like sort of what the, the higher order benefit is, which is so you don't die of boredom or loneliness or isolation. Um, and you, you know, get to know other people in similar situations and have more contact with your library, and if you don't wanna do that, you don't.
Okay.
Okay, um. Another idea that came out of, my, my daughter came in and then did a seed sharing workshop and a lot of people that were sort of. From different walks of life in Steen Town came and um, really liked the idea of doing that on a more regular basis, just coming to share tips and ideas. Um, so, uh, I think you were gonna pick the date to launch a kickoff for that again. Um, for like a farmer gardener tip and practice sharing group or whatever you wanna call it. Uh, as, as Jen mentioned, the pop-up store, I've spoken with, with Dan at that, they're building the uh, site and they're gonna share it with us, it should be done soon. I looked today to see if I, I've received anything and I haven't. Um, so the only thing that's gonna be different from what we've done in the past is we're gonna have children in, in addition to adult um, t-shirts. So the items will be youth and adult t-shirts, sweats, uh, sweatshirts, blankets, tote, that's all we, we know. Uh, so that should be ready to look back soon and then. We need to publicize that so that we can get people their merchandise at the, uh, about on the twenty-fourth. Um, we also talked about doing seasonal swaps. Originally, we were talking about doing a holiday day course. Uh, swap, which is slated for November eighteenth. And then in uh, the most recent marketing meeting, we thought maybe we should do that, uh, one, one per season, um. And the first one was holiday day four, the second one would be art supply swap in February, in, in um. April, May time period, we do a plant seed garden supply swap. And June and July, like a summer beach supplies swap. And the main thing that we need to do is make sure that people understand they can facilitate their.
Correct.
Ground. If nobody wants it. Or, or.
So at the first swap, you would just put stuff out and say, take what you want. Basically, okay.
And if things are left, they.
Then you take them home.
You take them home or you pay in advance to not have to take them home, so that we make some money off the arrangement.
I did see that East Green, I think it was East Greenbush, was doing a Halloween costume swap, which is gonna be considered for next year.
Oh, that's a really good idea, since you do that. I like that idea.
Then it gives.
Bigly was just.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably happens very often.
So I guess we'll start with the first one, the ELOs and. Um, just, we still need to update, we can, need to update the staff and press these sessions of the website.
Um, uh, Deborah's has been updated.
Oh, cool.
Um, I just need to get a picture of her and. It's like, what am I gonna put here? So I'll, I'll get her up there soon. Um, yeah, I still have to get the staff together. They're, they're. Yes, I will.
Great, okay, that's it for me. Thanks, Sarah.
I have a question about the. Office. When you talk about coming in, doing your work in there. Would be a problem?
Yeah, we thought about that before, is that a lot of people, if they had a phone call, they could go into another space.
You're going to another space, they could step, I mean, they're gonna be on cell phones, right, so they could step outside. I don't think it would be that.
I don't think.
Yeah, if you have that.
Well, I mean, it's, I would say, if I had, I might just say, I need to pray, so I'm here.
I think you would pick a day where you don't have a, a lot of phone calls, or you wouldn't do it, yeah.
We do have one person who comes in just to get out of this house.
Yeah.
He works here every now and then, like, once a month, maybe he comes in to do it, so, you know, we can see. And you should ask him if he's got any suggestions for, we're gonna make this like for everybody there.
Yeah, that would be a good idea.
He's my neighbor, so I can.
When is the holiday swap, the eighteenth of November?
Yeah.
Yes.
It sure is.
Kim, you're up.
Alright, so we have a strategic planning meeting and we're a bunch of work really, we've got a lot of stuff to do. The um, the track, and we didn't update this because I feel like this already looks straight, you look at what we did through July. See, most columns have stuff in them. There's a couple that they don't, but most of them do. And the big gap is the kiosk and the um, Veterans Day display. And at first we were trying to, we just gotta get rid of those things, like, but what I realized is if you really look at some of the other. The category descriptions, they fit all at the same. They, they really do.
They just stay on.
So, Richard had said. Me, you're like, why don't we just get rid of those columns? We can't just get rid of those columns because they're part of our work plan, but in looking at the work plan, we, I think we mentioned, we can. We can just incorporate those things into the other.
Yeah.
So I did make a. So I did make a um. A suggested work tracker for next year, and I did put this up, I just didn't make copies of this stuff, and I didn't have, no, we probably have to hold for everybody. Um, but basically we'll eliminate eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, the columns under assure libraries continuing viability. But then I feel like one of the things that sort of gets lost in the mix is summer camp. And um, and I feel like that is, it would need like under that in the strategic plan. The summer camp is figures kind of big in there. So I feel like we'll have a columning team for that, for youth committee, summer camp, seasonal events. Scholarship, all of that would be in one place. And I think like that would make sense to have it all in one place. Not adding or taking anything away. It's just saying on the tracker, this is where we're gonna put all of that stuff. Some of it will still go in other places, children's programming.
So sort of like community enrichment stuff. Youth focus.
Yeah, so in the strategic plan, we have ensure the library is continuing viability and relevance, and then it's um. And this is in. In the the plan, oh wait, it's um, ensure the library recognizes depopulation with immunity, collaborates with other organizations to ensure veterans. Repeat services. So if that's what the strategic plan says, to me, it makes sense to say, let's have a youth column with summer camp and all of that stuff in it. But the veterans can be just lumped in with the other groups that we recognize and run with. And then the the kiosk, the the veterans, that can all be in that column of. Doing all that stuff, but they don't need their own. So that's, I I have this done, I just. Then this helps you guys, then I'll give you this. But I think, and what I did on this is there's a note on the tracker with the actual words from the. The plan, I actually printed it on this. So we can actually see like this, what this is about, because I realized we were sort of. Maybe putting some things where we really paid attention to our own words. Um, this is for twenty twenty-four. Um, the other thing that we talked about at the meeting is that it would make sense to adopt a new strategic plan for twenty twenty-five. And then to go on five-year strategic plans, so it'd be the the fives and the tens. So twenty twenty-five, twenty thirty, twenty thirty-five would be the new strategic plans, the five-year plans. And so um, that'll mean next year, the whole process of strategic plan that I'm more than willing to to do. And it'll involve working with Sarah on some surveys, Deborah wants to be involved in some stuff, and um. And it'll initially gathering a lot of data. Um, from it, I'll just hang out the job. Ask people questions, you know, and and whatever, and um, and then um. Deborah and and probably you will pull in um. And maybe Sarah, we'll we'll come up with a preliminary, like, here's this very big strategic plan that we're suggesting. Here's last year's, here's, you know, and then we go from there and sort of work something out. And we'll have a plan in place by like October, November meeting. And then the tracker will be ready to go for January and will. Now, for a couple of years, you know how it works, and it will all kind of be smoother and.
I have to say, it's been great. I was skeptical at first, because I'm like, oh, gosh, this is gonna be a lot more work. But it's really helpful. It's been very helpful, so, and I just going through my own director's reports and saying, okay, this is number two, this is number five, this goes here. It's, it it definitely has helped.
And then it really does give us that visual and show us, and I feel like shows us like how much we're accomplished, really. You know, um, so, and it does also give you, and I am like, oh. This area where we haven't.
Is that because it shouldn't really be a goal, or is it because?
Because, oh, it's it's the Veterans Day thing, so it's gonna happen in November, you know, whatever. Uh, in summer camp, nothing's gonna happen till forever, but but sometimes, yeah, it's like, oh, yeah, we said we were gonna do this, you know.
Yeah, it's been very helpful.
So anyways, that's that's the the. There we are.
Thank you.
And I feel like, I feel like this year has been really good as far as getting used to to tracking stuff and everything. And that next year, the tracker will be like more usable. And yeah, and what I'd really like to do is to get the the board, they say, Kim's on board now. By the time we have that new strategic plan for twenty twenty-five and tracker, everybody should.
Maybe we can really do, it sounds like what what Kim is doing is as we prepare prepare our reports, we're thinking that way too. Like, oh, maybe I already put in, this is a number two, this is a number five, and and just do that as part of the writing reports that you're writing in anyway. That's great. Thank you. Okay, next recruitment. Hey, recruitment. Any other uh people that that talk to them, or you talk to them, or anybody else potentially?
You're a great host, Karen.
I also think those, the people that came to the C. Dating, that's a whole new group of people to tap into, you gotta figure out, keep getting them to come out.
They've been coming.
Yeah.
Oh, the scene exchange? Yeah, yeah, no, but it this was a group of people that are young and new to the community and seem to want to be a part of everything, so. I've already, yeah, but I think we'll be able to. I don't know, at least see if they'd be willing to come in and do stuff, once they get settled, I think.
The C exchange over the Pittsburgh Library, I think they use that all the time.
We don't use it as much as I would like to see it used, but.
All right, youth committee. So we. Survived.
The annual mud wrestling. I apologize.
I think I had set on my calendar to wait until after the um Christmas thing, but I didn't use it anyways.
Are you gonna have time to do that? Cause I can do that at some payment suite.
Well, no, I can I can call on Monday.
It may be, it needs to be dried at least a little bit, so it might be a little bit before, I'll just email Tracy and I'll see you.
I, we have a meeting planned to plan the Halloween party, Rebecca's going to volunteer, I will be um. Well, actually, the next meeting is right before the Halloween party, so I will ask now if anyone is willing to donate baked goods. Water bottle. Um, or time. Mostly snacks, if you'd like to donate, I'll send out, you know, you don't have to. I'm not gonna put you on the spot, but anyway.
You want candy for that?
It's October twenty-eighth, Saturday, and um, no, not candy, but like, we have, last year we have, you know, chips and. Anyway, and I think Kim may have donated, maybe that was for you, sir, anyway. We'll be looking for some. And.
Sign up for water.
Keep in mind, you know, sign up for water, they want the little. So what that means is that the deposit is way more than you're expecting. Go to the grocery store, don't pay the girl, I think you're retarded. All I'm buying is the water, not the. That's two dollars more than I expected.
There's a lot of them. Um, we did submit our budget request, um, I haven't heard anything PJ, but we'll see how that goes. I know that.
They have a budget meeting. Budget workshop on October ninth, so I'm planning on being there for that. So we can talk about our requests.
I won't be there, but um, we'll break down, you know, we only asked for, I think it ended up being. Like fifty dollars more than, not not fifty, but. Six hundred dollars more than much here, or something like that, so. But versus um, from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, we, it was a three thousand. So we kind of stayed right, you know. Yeah, I'm not gonna put math, but it's less than the year before. And so we'll see, but I think.
We did ask for an increase in the administrative fee to the library.
It's a lot of work for Kim and the wear and tear on the library.
Is the plan still to do it here?
The other thing is that we um. Attended the fourth town budget meeting to discuss that, and there were some ideas thrown around about where it could be held. Um, but I don't know if you've reached out to anybody yet, but the main ideas are the fire hall, which no one feels optimistic about. Or maybe filling in up in where the story walk used to be, or trying to do it across the street. There's issues with all those things, so those are. Yeah, so, yeah, I don't love that idea as a parent, but um.
I don't know, I mean.
They're a little protective of their space, so they want to make sure that nothing happens to it, and having summer camp in there, I think would be.
The town, um, you know, the folks that we've talked to, everyone seemed to be on board with like trying to figure something out, because everyone. Agrees that what we have going on now is not sustainable, um, so they're willing to, I think, help us try to figure it out and. But did that seem like, is figuring it out, finding an alternative site, or is figuring it out, finding a way to manage?
I'm gonna get in touch with Steve Bittermoat and see if he has any suggestions or ideas, and Bill Jennings was very like, you know, well, if it doesn't cost that much. Maybe that is what we need to do, so you know, if we can, we're there keeping everything open.
I think everyone's in agreement that having it here or as close to the library makes sense, so that the library can continue to. Um, run it, so.
So just looking for a solution in there.
A solution, and if it's possible to just fill in, and I think that's, everyone agrees that that's the best option, but. Um, Aldi, Aldi, Aldi is was not super optimistic about a a number of different things, so. Just saying that all of the possibilities have.
But it wa- it did really feel like they were, it was like a partnership type, like they discussed. They're all on board, and and they also, it wasn't just like, well, you guys should go figure out something. Like, we're we'll work together to figure out.
Repealing our being. And agreeing that it's a really important program for the community and um that having it here is really nice for everyone to see kids and. You know, see the camp actually going on, and if it's somewhere else, um, not being able to stay with them or not, it's, you know, takes away.
Um, we're just gonna have to, cause Bill's retiring, um, and it's gonna be a whole new board. We're gonna have to keep that in mind when it comes to what happens next year. So, starting in January, we're gonna have that same kind of support. That could be, I don't know what'll happen.
One of my friends is running.
For the town board?
He's on the best tree, so I can kind of. Spiritual guidance. Put a lot of fire in the tombstone.
Probably an engineering and expertise in there, and maybe you could speak to them, I know.
Yeah, but nothing huge.
My my neighbor's an excavation contractor, specializes in that kind of. Exactly, and 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 he could, he's done a lot to my house, where you kind of bypass and dig trenches, et cetera, to kind of. Help with the run.
And a million years ago, I was shocked at how.
Oh, yeah, no, it's.
With like eight different levels of gravel, so different types and everything, and then the drains and stuff in between. Everything's gotta go in order. And this guy's ready this day, but this guy didn't come yet, and it was a nightmare.
Yeah, yeah, and if you're actually. Yeah, if you wanted to go down and then just really do it right, you'd go down a couple of feet to hold the bed and just in that. I mean, it's bypassing it with channels may be a better option. Andy Sands from Slaven Springs Excavating.
All right, so we have a member of the public, do you have any comments, Karen? Uh, hey, we covered our new business already elsewhere, what I was gonna talk about, solar panels and the footsteps, new um correspondence. We already, the only two correspondence I had was the dates for the upper Hudson stuff, so we covered that, so with.
Before we go. I went, they hand out to the communication workshop.
Was there anything uh in particular that was helpful to keep in mind?
Was it specifically related to candidates, that those media?
No, it was, well, it's not really, it's smaller, I didn't know it was medium. But it was really just understand what your message is, think about what your problem is, get on it quickly, yes. I mean, it's sort of like, get a spokesman, get your talking points.
Did you, are, does our insurance policy include prices or phone? I mean, I'm, I mean, I'm not, it sounds stupid. Policies do have that built in. It's a cost for you hire a public relations firm in case something blows up in your face.
I highly doubt that we.
Sides, how many little things they sneak in. Yeah, I mean, you just probably, I know it sounds stupid, I mean, I used to do it to oil wells, and we came into this thing all the time, like mining disasters, et cetera. Little bit more, but it's it's actually a part of your policy that is designed to hire a public relations firm to help you. In case something like this happens.
And the major message was your policies and your friends, they basically define what you wanna do. And the formation of them identifies the interests, the meeting interests. So they thought about the policy, if they have a good policy, they provide the framework for whatever messaging.
That sounds like a lot like what they were talking about with the challenge, yeah, be consistent, you know, have a policy and be consistent. The minute you deviate from the policy, you're toast.
I got an email from our insurance carrier. About renewing our stuff, so I'm gonna send you what she sent me.
But as far as.
Just so you can take a look at it and.
I'll look at it, and I may just ask her some stupid questions, and say, look, I was in the business for forty-five years, I know these are stupid questions, but. Oh, you're with Gallery, I wondered, oh, they they're used to stupid.
Okay.
You used to ask me lots of stupid. Hey, when I was in business, when I was in business, I learned that there are like, you know, a hundred different agents, now there's like ten. It's just, you know, it's it's.
Yeah, we, they used to be someone local, and then. They bought out, were bought out. No, I think they're in Long Island.
Long Island, really?
I think so. I never had a problem when I contacted them, so it's always. You derailed everybody. Make the motion.
I went to motion to adjourn this.
All of bear.
I have no idea.
Oh, wait, let me turn that.